Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and, excuse me, welcome to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Would you please rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glasbell.
Present.
Ed Ullaberry.
Here.
Judy Ann Viles is absent. All other city councilors are present.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, pro tem, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. The next item of business on our agenda tonight is the call for public comment, and I won't read the standard admonition unless there are people here who I presume probably want to speak, so if you would like to speak and public comment, would you raise your hand, please? Okay, I will read this. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. I will follow our standard procedures tonight, and anyone wishing to speak will have three minutes to address the council. I would also ask if you're here and to make a comment, and someone makes the comment that you were intending to make, if you would please, in the interest of time, just say you concur or agree with what the previous person's said. I would appreciate if you would do that. That being said, who would like to go first? Yes, sir, in the blue cap.
Good evening. My name is John Brown. I live over by American Village. To highlight the importance of the relationship between the citizens of Montrose and their elected officials, the year of our citizens' campaign to celebrate the contributions of residents of the Montrose community was published a few years ago. I assume that this proclamation is still in effect for times such as these. As our elected officials, you are merely one of us. We have entrusted you to be caretakers of all that we hold dear and call home. Regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, or sexual preference, we are all part of the fabric of this community, including our opinions and input. The critical issues facing Montrose needs to be addressed proactively in the best interest of all Montrose legal citizens. Healthy constructive debates and listening sessions should be encouraged with as much public feedback as possible, especially the more challenging community issues. If you doubt the community's interest, look at the record-breaking crowd when the topic first came up on the March, on the agenda on March 19th, 2024 meeting. I don't believe that the goals being established in the proclamation then are any less important now. There has not been any further public forums about making a statement stating that Montrose is to become a non-sanctuary city or sanctuary city. After reading an article in the Montrose Daily Press about an interview with members of the city council, it stated that Montrose does not need to declare itself as non-sanctuary city because we are not sanctuary city, and that another vote would never happen. This may be a sound principle in the minds of the city council, but if we don't openly declare we are not, we are a non-sanctuary city, then the state and Denver will be sending illegal newcomers, which their new name is, to Montrose. It has already been happening in our schools. The schools are already being filled with non-English-speaking students whose parents are the illegal newcomers, and interpreters must be hired to meet this increasing need and expense. I would encourage the council to have another vote on this issue as soon as possible, or set it up for a special election to let the valued citizens vote. I would be happy to participate in an open roundtable discussion. I hereby request that the topic for non-sanctuary city be put on the agenda again for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Please, no applause. Mr. Stockton?
Dave Stockton, 3009 Coke Drive. I too am going to talk about this ball that never stops bouncing. Two weeks ago, you had quite a few people try and convince you to once again declare Montrose as a non-sanctuary city, apparently some more tonight. Judge Brown, two weeks ago, suggested council initiate the initiative process and put the issue to a vote by the citizens. I say that if Judge Brown and like-minded want the issue on the ballot, they do the work themselves, that they file a petition with a clerk and gather the requisite number of signatures. They don't want to do that because it's a difficult task. Also, they just might find there is not enough support for it. The request for an official declaration of a non-sanctuary city is being driven by a national politics. It's request being driven by one man keen on the fears of people, those fears being we are being invaded by an army of brown-skinned people. It's unfortunate that our country is being driven by partisan politics. It's also unfortunate that partisan decision-making has trickled down to the state and the county. You, as an elected body, in theory, is a nonpartisan council. I ask that you cast away any national or regional political party pressures and make your decisions based on what is right by all the people. I ask that no further action be taken on this issue by council. To paraphrase you, Mr. Reed, we are not a sanctuary city, and therefore we do not need to declare ourselves as being one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to go next? Excuse me, sir. Let this gentleman go, and then you can go next, if that's all right? And you'll be next. And then you, okay?
We have four people in a row.
I'm sorry?
We have four people in a row because of the three-minute allowance.
Just one of you, come on up.
Hello again. I was just here last, last council session, and I guess after I left, the guy that followed me called me the climate guy. So, I wear that name. I like it. It's a good, good fit. I come for you today to talk about a three-legged stool and leadership. When adversity faces a community, faces a community, leadership is needed from one, two, or three of the legs of a stool, private, government, nonprofit. This is why I'm here today. We believe the city of Montrose can provide the leadership of one of the three legs of the stool and spur the development of many important projects that can help the city reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Projects that have already been done by the city. The city has built a 164-kilowatt solar garage over the parking lot for the public safety building. Kudos to you for having the vision and energy to implement that project. Thank you. We're hoping the city can do more projects to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. New projects will take vision and money to build. Fortunately, there are many, there are many resources out there to help with grants to fund projects. What we need from you is the power and vision to identify more projects. As an example, your neighbor to the north, the city of Delta, has identified three projects that they helped to reduce greenhouse gases. Their public safety building is the old armory building that they chose not to demolish. They kept the shell and they're rebuilding the whole building inside, saving tons of material that didn't have to go to the dump. And in addition, they were going to heat the building with gas, and they reconsidered. They looked at grant opportunities, and they are electrifying the whole public safety building, which is incredible. That's far-reaching vision for them. Another project that the city of Delta is doing, they're building a seven-acre solar field that will feed into their light and power system to reduce energy costs for the city. A third thing that they're discussing tonight, and I'm going to leave this meeting and go to their city council meeting, is the approval of a microgrid power source that will keep the lights on in an emergency and there's a blackout for the city. They have their own power system, which is unusual for a city, but they have their own lights and power. But they're going to, they're looking at building a microgrid that will supply enough energy for five restaurants. The Bill Hettles recognition-
Sorry, you have 15 seconds left.
Thank you. I understand that there are many things I do not know about the city works and many complexities in the operation of the city. My intent is good, and it is for the citizens of the city that I speak. I hope that I'm all-
Thank you, sir.
So close.
Sorry. Who would like to go next?
Thank you.
You know, I forgot to ask, you don't have to provide your address, but would you at least provide your name when you stand up to make comments for the record, please?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jim Day. I live in Montrose County and have been a resident of the state for 63 years. I am a volunteer with the United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, I come to you as a concerned citizen, sharing alarming information about our state's voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research and conduct by the highly qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear: They don't add up. Just like your checkbook must balance, so must our votes. If you had 10,000 fewer dollars in your bank account than you deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened. And if a company had that significant a discrepancy in its books, the company would almost certainly conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law for all public companies. Our audit of the 2022 election, using only official data provided by state election officials, shows that the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying any one candidate won over another or that any election should be overturned. The state official data from a certified election shows that the votes asked counted were not all valid and accurate under law. Today, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the accuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We are happy to meet with you to go over this information, including more detail about the specific findings. If you have any questions that I cannot answer now, I'll commit to getting you the answers in writing from the United Sovereign Americans executive team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation have been shared with the state election officials and law enforcement. It is essential that you, as our representatives, make clear that these issues should be taken seriously. Today, we come to you, our closest elected representatives for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to the concerns of your constituents and your country. Thank you. Our next two speakers will read the resolution in two parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation.
Hello, my name is Anne Holderman, and I'm from Montrose County. It is recognized that civil rights in the United States and every citizen to have a fair, free, and fair election, and is the right of suffrage that can be denied by a demarcation or delusion of the weight of the citizen's vote, must be affected by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the free franchise. And that is Simmons 19, or 1964. It is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections that are accurate, free from distortion and manipulation. Congress seeks to guard the elections of members into Congress against the possibility of unfairness by compelling everyone concerning, holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observation. Every duty and development upon him should be engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience of the law. That's Corey 1886, or 1888. Our constitution system represents the government, only works when the following of four tenets of the elections are upheld. One, the voter must be accurate. Voter registration, 1993. Votes counted must be eligible voters. U.S. Constitution, Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, who, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system can help vote. It's Act 2020. Anyway, these findings are accuracies of requirements of voting system, the federal election. Accuracy is defined by the ability of the system to capture and report the specific section, abstain, the selection made by the voter without error. If the intent of the voter must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of the election that varies from law is an infringement of the civil rights of the citizen, a fraud. The United States has been in a point of conscious of no more or no less than the expression of the qualified elections electors of their choice and candidate, and that's 1941. Colorado, in 2022, elections, elections appear to have been invalid, depriving the guaranteed protection of our national rights under the government duty and provide chosen by us the American people, resulting in uncomfortable damage to our families and the way of our life and the fabric of the United States.
Hi, my name's Jill, and I live in Montrose. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us and demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked secure ballot similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law or fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party candidate and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and CVRs. Six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, NIST-compliant anonymized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified insured and bonded to security forensics or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all the paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of all the unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Whereas an open-source audit of the Colorado 2022 general election conducted by Colorado state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both the federal and state laws, including 1,468,000 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Colorado State voter roll database, 100,000 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, 34,000 more votes counted than voters who voted, 100,000 apparent voting violations in excess of the standard for the valid federal election. The maximum allowable was 21. Certification is defined by law-
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ed Lafferty. I'm from Montrose County. You just heard a powerful written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that are proactively protected the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited U.S. Supreme Court precedents to support the need for such action. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing, and we need certainty. The voting system, which controls our most vitally important right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing inaccurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that, that these anomalies with our election system, a system that is part of our national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? How much is it costing us not to fix a problem? How much is it costing the GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health, the self-esteem of our children, the young people, and how much is it costing our dignity to fight, keep fighting each other? The cost is immeasurable, so I urge you to show your agreement by passing the resolution. Our website showcasing our initiatives nationwide has some extremely important videos that explain anomalies and apparent violations of law that are being found here in Colorado, as well as other states. The website is Unite for Freedom, that's U-N-I-T-E, the number four, freedom.com. And encourage you to check it out for more organization, information about the organization. What you heard tonight is accumulated of thousands of hours of work by our highly qualified and credentialed volunteer data team from data teams from state Colorado and across the country. This, let's step back in for a second and look at the big picture. Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in Colorado, have questions about the trustworthiness of our election. I think we can all agree that we wish that that was not the case, but official data shows the concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. At the same time, government representatives at all levels are not being transparent or responsive to what our citizen audit has found. Our right to choose representatives is legally valid, and transparent elections is the foundation upon which our constitutional republic was established. That right has been bravely protected over the past two and a half centuries by the sacrifice of brothers, fathers, mothers, and sisters. You on this council tonight have a chance to show everyone who defend our American liberty that the citizen you represent, that you, that you value it by passing this resolution demanding a valid general election in 2024. We appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Next comment, please.
comments about the recent illegal immigration influx costs that were up to three, are estimated $340 million across the Denver metro, the recent study has shown. While this information comes out of Denver, I think it's naive to think that these issues aren't going to be coming to Montrose, and as been previously mentioned, we're already seeing that influx. Released Thursday by the Common Sense Institute, the report was an attempt to calculate the costs to house, feed, educate, provide healthcare services to the immigrants who arrived in Denver after illegally crossing the southern border. Early in this, they call it a crisis, Denver officials decided local taxpayers would shoulder the cost. Who pays for these costs in Montrose? Federal law requires emergency departments to provide medical treatment regardless of patient's immigration status or ability to pay, and school districts across the nation have been required to offer free education since 1982, when the Supreme Court found unconstitutional a Texas statute that denied students based on immigration status. Does Montrose collect this type of data in the school system? Does Montrose know the costs impacting our city? Things are only going to get worse potentially, in my opinion. The estimated cost to date for schools across Denver metro could be between $98 million and $222 million, which is about 1% of Colorado's K to 12 budget for the upcoming academic year. An estimated $48 million emergency departments have been provided in uncompensated healthcare to immigrants equates to about $2,900 per immigrant. While studies of, oh, nope, the prevailing theory among officials for Denver's draw has been the city's proximity to El Paso, Texas, and its pivotal transportation hub, and its status as a sanctuary city. Broadly speaking, a sanctuary city refers to the policies that discourage law enforcement from reporting an individual's immigration to federal authorities. Remember, these immigrants have illegally entered the country, and I would recommend and call again for the city council to once, do a revote on this. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, in the back. Right after this lady.
Good evening. My name is Karen Lee, and I live in Montrose County. I've been a resident here for 13 years. I'm in the healthcare field, and we have seen how much the city and county has grown in the last 13 years, and I concur what the gentleman just said. We don't have the resources. The hospital's taxed. We are hiring travelers at the hospital to handle what we have now. And to have more people come in, whether they're illegal immigrants or not, is going to tax our city severely. We just don't have the resources. And, and as far as the highways, the instructions, we've got the bridge out going to Gunnison. How are we going to handle more people coming back and forth between here and there? So, that's all I have to add. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Good evening. My name is Ron Smith. I'm a head of business in Montrose. Fortunately, it's been wonderful for 22 years. Just some items I'd like to bring up for your consideration. First of all, I pray and encourage a culture of cooperativeness and honor in your stewardship serving your voters. I know that's not an easy task, and your constituents, and our city and community, free of adversarial and intimidating and abrasive interchanges. Number two, I pray and hope for the seriousness of us, the taxpayers, plea to make this city and this community great for all of our citizens. Number three, in a separate subject, I'd like to follow up on a request some months ago, I believe, where we had accountability for both successes and failures in funding of taxpayer money for providing private enterprise, and particularly in restaurants, where some restaurants are getting funded to have a competitive advantage. And we're in an environment right now where a lot of restaurants are really struggling every day to even stay afloat. As to the climate world, I've planted 27 trees. My wife and I have planted 27 trees on our property. I don't know that we're going to make a massive difference in this world, but I really encourage, if we're going to go down that road, that we focus on what will really help the environment and not be a transfer of wealth. Last but not least, I've had some recent travel through Denver, a sanctuary city, and if you've ever driven down certain areas there, you're going to find out that a sanctuary city, even though some people won't agree with me, becomes a tent city with insidious abuse of drugs and alcohol. And if you haven't driven by that area or a number of those areas, I suggest that you do so. do. So I highly, I ask that you reconsider the vote on that proposition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? There are no further public comments. We'll move on to the business at hand, which would be item number six, approval of a minutes, city council consideration of the minutes of May 21, 2024, regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes of the May 21, 2024, regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Please vote. It's unanimous. We'll move on to item number seven, city council consideration of resolution 2024-08, a resolution of the city council of the city of Montrose, Colorado, authorizing the filing of the Colorado Department of Early Childhood Employer-Based Childcare Grant application for the purposes of adding childcare capacity within the city of Montrose, Colorado. And we have community development director, Mr. Jace Okwell.
Just checking the mic. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, you're on.
Perfect. Okay. This one's always a little finicky. Good evening, city council. I presented on this topic yesterday morning at the work session. So just for the public here and the public that are chiming in, I'll go through some things again. But this item I have in front of you is a grant authorization request through the Colorado Department of Early Childhood to help fund an employer-based childcare facility. Over the course of the last few months, city staff has been searching to identify possible childcare locations near the civic campus, kind of the downtown core area. And after touring a number of buildings, it was determined that the best fit, and really the only fit that we found, was the property at 703 South 9th Street. This facility has been used in the past as a childcare facility, is already owned by the city, which is great because no acquisition would be needed. The school district currently leases this building, and after discussions with them, and really continued discussions with them, they would be willing to vacate should the city move forward with the childcare proposal here. So again, gave a full update yesterday morning, so I'll kind of give a briefer update today. But just for some history, the Colorado legislature passed Senate Bill 22-213 back in 2022. What this helped do was expand employer-based childcare facility grant programs, this one in particular, to assist the costs of creating an onsite or near-site childcare facility for eligible nonprofit, for-profit, or government entities. This grant program responds to really the long-established need for more affordable, convenient, and quality childcare. Grant guidelines came out in mid-May, so really just a couple of weeks ago, and per those guidelines, the maximum funding request is $800,000. And for government agencies like ourselves, there would be a 25% match required. Funding can be used for construction, renovation, remodel, and retrofit, but it can also be used for furnishing of a childcare facility, which typically adds up pretty quickly, as I'm learning over the last couple of weeks here. In addition, the city of Montrose must attest that it will maintain the childcare facility for a minimum of three to five years based on the amount being requested. If the childcare facility is not maintained as a fully operational and staff childcare facility for that minimum amount of time, the city would be required to repay proportionate share of said grant funding. So with that said, the grant application is due on June 14th, so coming up pretty quick. That's why the quick turnaround occurred from yesterday to today. And what we're doing right now from a staff standpoint is finalizing our budget for that retrofit, remodel, and furnishings. So we don't have a solid number. We've got an inspection tomorrow with a number of groups going out, as well as a licensing agency for childcare to really hone in those numbers for that rehab. Because that budget isn't finalized, what we're requesting today is authorization of a grant in the amount up to $800,000. Obviously, we don't think that that grant will be in the full amount of $800,000, but we don't want to have to come back or kind of shoot ourselves in the foot, per se, if some estimates come in higher than we expect. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
On the review of the building itself, are we utilizing our inspection? Anybody from our inspection department to go along with that review?
Yeah, so we have. We've actually inspected the property with our building official and some public work staff two weeks ago, and we've got kind of another more in-depth inspection tomorrow with our internal team here. And what that first inspection showed was the building's actually in pretty good condition. So a lot of the capital expenditures that typically is where you see the most money spent, so your roof, your windows, your siding, your exterior improvements, a lot of those are in very good shape. Again, this being used as a childcare facility in the past is really a benefit here because it was licensed in the past. Granted, some licensing requirements likely have been changed or modified, so we'll have to kind of update appropriately. But all said, things looked in really good shape on that first inspection, and I think we'll make kind of a final determination tomorrow, but all things look good.
One thing you mentioned yesterday, I think is important, too, is that in order to be a licensed childcare facility, there has to be a certain amount of outdoor play space, and that it does possess some outdoor play space, but it's also right next to a park.
Yeah, it's really an ideal location. It has plenty of outdoor space on site, but again, right adjacent to a park. So as good as it gets from a kind of an outdoor spacing standpoint for childcare, just to be a quality childcare facility overall. So we're pretty excited from the location standpoint. We were a little bit nervous as we were kind of diving into locations, and this one came up and kind of created a lot of buzz, so we're happy about it.
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
It currently is a building that belongs to the city, right?
Correct. It is in city ownership and leased to the school district. And again, there's been ongoing conversations with the school district, and they would be willing to vacate should we move forward with this. And more discussions will continue to be had about the timing of that.
Counsel has no other questions or comments. I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this? Yes, sir.
Since this is going to be a childcare facility, is there any, I assume it's going to be for working parents to drop their children off for childcare? Or is this going to be a childcare for illegal or newcomers that are coming here that are not here to work and make Montrose grow, but just to eat off of the trough of Montrose?
I'm happy to answer that when public comments closed.
Any other public comment? I would ask you to please explain the purpose of this childcare facility.
Yeah, absolutely. The purpose of this is really an employer-based childcare facility. So we did a survey internal to city staff, as well as a number of governmental agencies within the city and quasi-governmental agencies, and that includes the school districts, the Montrose County, the Montrose Recreation District. And what that showed was a large number from those employers of childcare needs. So this grant funds a employer-based childcare program. So really, it would be primarily initially for city employees. That would be the employees that get preference to the childcare spaces, and the next would be the partner employees as we kind of figure out partnerships with the other entities that I just mentioned, so employer-based specifically.
Thank you, sir. No other public comment? I would take a motion, please.
I move to adopt resolution 2024-08 as presented.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number eight, city council consideration of the Eagle Ranch South subdivision preliminary plat, planner two, William Reese. William?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public. I do have a brief presentation to share, and I will pull that up here on the screen shortly. But in summary, in short, rather, this is a preliminary subdivision plat known as the Eagle Ranch South subdivision. I will have a vicinity map to show you shortly. So as can be seen here, this is a 3.8 acre site located just north of Oak Grove Road and south of Cook Drive. The property is currently zoned R2 low-density district, and the preliminary plat proposes six single-family residential lots, as well as an outlot reserved for future development. This is the zoning map. I will note that a small portion of the property is zoned R3A medium-high-density district, as you can see in the southwest corner. However, this is part of the outlot, and the six proposed lots are all located within the R2 zoning. The property is surrounded by other R2 zoning to the north, R3A both to the east and the west, and to the south is property outside of city limits. R2 zoning allows for single-family residences as a use by right. For any interested members of the public, this chart outlines our subdivision process. A sketch plan was reviewed by the planning commission, and this next step is the preliminary plat, which is voted upon by both the planning commission and the city council. This preliminary plat permits the applicant to put in infrastructure improvements, which must be in place and approved prior to recordation of a final plat. With any subdivision application, we do apply the following review standards. The proposal must conform with the master plan and zoning regulations. We review the relationship with the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, potential hazard areas, and other physical characteristics, the availability of water, sewer, and other utilities, compatibility with the natural environment, wildlife, et cetera, adjacent streets and traffic flow, emergency services, including police and fire, and the impacts on area schools. According to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, this is shown as residential mixed density low, which suggests that the area is appropriate for single-family homes and possibly small groups of attached developments, such as duplexes or townhomes. The R2 zoning designation is intended to provide for development of single-family residences along with certain other compatible land uses. The proposal of single-family homes is a use by right. This here is the subdivision plat itself. I know this is very small to see on these screens here, but this is available in tonight's public packet as well. It's much easier to see on there. As you can see, this proposes six new residential lots located at the end of a cul-de-sac. One note about the cul-de-sac proposal, this does differ from the previously approved preliminary plats in the area, which suggested Eagle Ranch Lane would connect with a future road known as Peyton Drive. Because of this change, the existing lane surname would not comply with street naming requirements. A note on this plat does state that due to the developer's request, the existing Eagle Ranch Lane would need to be renamed to Cook Drive. This is not just an arbitrary naming convention. These road names are standards, which are not just unique to Montrose, but also applicable elsewhere. The street naming and addressing is determined by our emergency 911 coordinator and GIS coordinator. These names do show how roads are or are not interconnected, and do need to remain consistent to ensure emergency responders can appropriately navigate roads within the overall network. Those seconds or minutes differences can be life-or-death situations. So if a road name change is required, that's not a decision that's taken lightly, but if E911 and GIS requires a road name change, that is done for the benefit of the overall public health, safety, and welfare. Here are the infrastructure plans associated with the plat. Once this infrastructure is in place and approved by the city, it would be dedicated as a public road to the city. And so in summary, staff finds that the preliminary plat is in compliance with subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent of the R2 zoning district. We did bring this before the planning commission on May 22, 2024, and they did unanimously vote to recommend approval with the standard condition that staff recommends for all preliminary plats, as shown on this slide. We do recommend approval of the Eagle Ranch South preliminary plat with the same condition as shown here. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
And there have been, excuse me, there have been no changes since it was presented at work session, correct?
This was not presented at work session.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Excuse me. My mistake. Counsel, questions and comments?
Yes, one question I have is if, when you're looking at that outlot A, it shows that utility easement coming up off of Oak Grove, is there plans for future development utilizing that as road connecting outlot A? Is that in the current works with this project? Or is that some future development?
So the outlot A is reserved for future development. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like at this time. That will be up to a future developer, whether it's the same developer or a different developer, to determine. I think Scott can also chime in as well.
Yeah, this was all under one preliminary plat initially back in the early 2000s, and it had, you know, connections out to Peyton Drive and a whole road configuration for all of the larger parent parcel. It's since been chopped up and sold and under different ownership. So those kind of get, the preliminary plat expired, so it's less enforceable. You know, the same overall vision, you know, to line up with Peyton and stuff as that western area develops is there, but it'll really depend on what they use it for and how they develop it and how those roads will interconnect. Generally, we try and make it all interconnect and work to the best, to the extent possible, but sometimes the way it develops, because of different ownership, some of those are less possible. So it's on our minds, but there's nothing definitive at this point because the use is on the southern outlot there, and then the property between this parcel and 6700 is a different developer, and we don't know their development pattern. There hasn't been any movement on that, so to be determined still. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? Any public comment? Mr. Stockton?
Good evening again. Dave Stockton, 3009 Cook Drive. This property up here. On May 22, I brought forth several concerns at the planning commission public hearing. My most pressing concern was stormwater drainage. From my perspective, it is not adequate at present. After a long discussion over the issue that evening, my anxiety level was abated to some degree, except for the proposed Lot 1. Stormwater from any lot improvement on that lot will continue to flow westerly towards private property owned by the Brown family. That property, which is the intersection of Sarah E. Lane and Cook Drive, is filled with construction debris and overgrown vegetation. Scott Murphy reached out to Rick Brown and asked him to clean up the area, to which he agreed to do some cleanup. At the same time, Mr. Brown told Mr. Murphy, Murphy, excuse me, he does not want any surface water to flow onto his property. Compounding the problem is water flows from Meadow Parkway and turns south on Sarah E. Lane to that trouble area, big pools of water. If council decides to approve the preliminary plat, I ask it do so contingent on no improvements be done to Lot 1 until such time the applicant, the Browns, and the city could come up to an agreement on how to handle the stormwater drainage.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any further discussion by counsel? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Is there any chance of some kind of, of that, or future, to indicate that the stormwater rain, the stormwater would be mitigated by two-two?
I'll look for something like that.
It's hard to answer any question without doing a little more detailed explanation of the issue. So if you got two minutes, I can explain the issue and how we are handling it, if that would be appropriate.
Sure.
Can I steal the screen, Lisa? So kind of back to that artifact of things developing in pieces, going to different ownership. We see these things a lot from the last building boom that, you know, they were going gangbusters. They would do things on the interim, and then the bottom fell out and development stopped. And then we kind of get some remnants of things that I'm about to explain here. So I will give you the full drainage story. So this is the area in question here, just to kind of help orient everybody. This is Meadows Parkway running east-west, 6700 Road. The cul-de-sac being proposed is on the end of Cook Drive here, if you can see my little mouse pointer. When they developed all these areas, it was all, this was all under single ownership, being developed in phases. They built Sarah E. Lane and Cook Drive initially as their first phase of the project. The product generally grades towards the west. Generally, you can always- the west. Generally, you can always follow the irrigation and the landscape, or the final subdivision will kind of fall the same, but it grades towards the west and in some places towards the south. You know, as this whole neighborhood developed, their intent was to, you know, keep building these streets, keep pushing the drainage towards the west and south, and eventually have a detention pond in the southwestern corner of the property to handle that drainage as it got there. But initially, if they couldn't build that pond because the road was all up here and there was no practical way to get the two to connect, assuming they would be continuing one filing after the other as development was doing at the time, when they built this portion of this first filing here, if you zoom in, you can see they built a little depression area right here. And what that's intended to do is just be a small localized depression area to handle that drainage kind of on the interim. The interim turned into decades when the bottom fell out, but not necessarily a bad practice. You know, the drainage area that contributes to it is what comes down Sarah E. Lane and the portions of Cook Drive that are established and the lots adjacent to them. So, you know, these houses here shed on portions of the lots naturally shed onto the right-of-way, and that right-of-way ends up, drainage ends up in this pond area. Knowing that, so and what has happened over the years, that pond area has become, you know, a little more overgrown, backs up water. You can kind of see some of the staining here, and kind of gets a little complicated because it's now on private property separate from the development that's being proposed here. So, the city can't just go into somebody's private property unless there's a public hazard or a strong case for us to do so, in which case legal needs to get involved to abate that nuisance. It's somewhat of an eyesore from a weed standpoint and things, so there's, you know, things that can happen on a code enforcement side, but the best solution is generally to work with landowners. So, when this landowner acquired this property, that was an inherent part of that property. So, you know, separate from this development, the owner of this land, you know, as they continue to develop, would need to make sure that is accommodated. That drainage, that is the historic drainage pathway that was established with filing one onto their property. That interim measure was established when they purchased it. So, you know, they can't say, oh, you can't bring that water on. To make that, and then to make that explicitly clear, we are actually working on a plat cleanup with this owner here and making that language clear in there that all drainage patterns need to be accommodated as future development occurs. So, to answer your question about, you know, adding additional plat notes, it would be pretty awkward to put one on somebody's, hinder somebody else's development for something that's out of their control, had nothing to do with their property purchase, and is handled elsewhere through plat processes with the owner that actually can be impacted by. You know, these, the other piece to make sure we don't compound that issue, we had, we went through multiple iterations with this designer and their design to make sure that all of its drainage grades away from the street. So, where the cul-de-sac is being expanded, they're running it south and into their own detention pond to go out to the old abandoned A drain there to the east, so that no additional, from the new lots towards the south, so the ones that aren't already graded towards the roadway, all of those are being captured by their own drainage system. They didn't necessarily have to. If you look, kind of the intent was always to go down the road, but just to, because we can, it's, they can grade it kind of either way. We asked them to grade it and make sure we're not exacerbating that problem. You know, these two lots, I think they're referred to one and two, if I remember right. You know, they're already built and were graded out to, you know, the road as it sits. And so, there's really no, you can't retroactively go out and regrade. It wouldn't be realistic to regrade, have them regrade the whole new road for two lots, for something that wasn't, again, wasn't their fault. So, long way of saying, we feel like the drainage issues are covered by the design and the plat notes and the work elsewhere. In our, it would be our recommendation that those are covered. And so, it's a long answer, but it's hard to answer without going into that detail.
Thank you very much. So, I used to farm it when it was all farmland out there. So, that means a village and American Village, and that water runs in a lot of different directions. I mentioned the water tap was pretty.
So, in essence, if I understand you correctly, Mr. Murphy, and in kind of summary form, your feeling is that the concerns raised by the neighbor, Mr. Stockton, are going to be addressed and not exacerbated?
Yeah, not exacerbated, addressed long range. So, we still have this interim condition where we're reliant on the private property owner to maintain their portion, and we're working through that with the owner. We have a little less control over that. So, you know, once they develop, it's absolutely addressed. In the interim, we need to work with the landowner, but nothing we're doing here would exacerbate beyond what is already established drainage patterns.
Further comment, questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
You're just going to make me read it, I know. I move to approve the Eagle Ranch South subdivision preliminary plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinance, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to item number nine on the agenda, City Council consideration of a professional services contract award to HDR Engineering Inc. in the amount of $148,413.72 for design and permitting of the San Juan Avenue 6530 Road Signal Project. City engineer, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will pull up some drawings here just to help everybody orient. So, no changes since the work session, so let's do a quick overview. Generally, general practice on our intersections and signal systems, wrong button, gets me every time. Try number two, thank you. So, generally, you know, our interior minor arterials are roundabout intersections as they get to larger volumes and capacities, or need that capacity. Out on the state highway system, which is, you know, State Highway 90, Townsend, which is 5550, and East Main, which is Highway 50, from the bypass eastward, and including the bypass, all are controlled by CDOT as state highways. As such, they generally, we have to meet volume thresholds before we can signalize an intersection, but when they do hit those volumes, they don't do roundabouts on those. Typically, they would go straight to a signalized intersection at those, once the volumes are met. When they hit those volumes, they'd look for the city as the primary loader on the side streets to, and sometimes in partnership with the county, to design and construct those intersections. So, we're looking at three with this project. The first is 6530 in San Juan. I'm just looking at the kind of northern side of town here. With development that's occurred in the area, they typically will do traffic impact studies to look at the volumes of the intersections and figure out when they would hit those thresholds for signalization. 6530 in San Juan has hit that threshold. So, with that, we can now move forward. We're see that here, so that's, you know, kind of hard to see, but this intersection here. So, the product would kind of finalize all the studies necessary to get permission from CDOT, finalize the designs, and get the design package complete and ready to bid, likely for a 2025 construction if the budget were approved, to construct that signal. The other two we are looking at, though, that are on the radar as far as kind of the next signalized projects on the horizon, is 6700 and Highway 50. So, that's out by Johnson Elementary School with the new 6700 extension complete. The traffic patterns have changed out there. So, we want to do a warrant study as part of this project just to see if we're at that threshold. I don't think we are, but we can also do the modeling to understand when we think we would get to that threshold. And that would allow us to then plan for, you know, doing what we're doing in 6530 at that intersection when appropriate, you know, years down the road. Similarly, at 6450 in San Juan, we don't think that one's met thresholds, but we want to understand where it is in the spectrum and when it might, so we can plan accordingly. We'll likely hold off on those portions of the studies until the roundabout intersection is complete, so the detour is, makes for atypical traffic patterns around town that would skew the results. And then also with the Highway 50 bridge closure and Little Blue going on, you end up with some distorted volumes on 50 that, again, there's no rush on it. We want to make sure we have representative data, so we're making informed decisions going forward. So, with that, we put a bid out, had a pretty good response from the bidders listed in the packet, and low bidder HDR, we've never contracted with directly, but we did work with them as a partner with the county on the Chupita Signal, and that product went well. So, no qualms about making a recommendation to them, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions? There are no questions. Any public comment? Seeing no public, or hearing no public comment, I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to award a professional services contract to HDR Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $148,413.72 for design and permitting of the San Juan Avenue 6530 Road Signal Project as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Please vote. And the vote is unanimous. That concludes our action items on the agenda for this evening. We move on to item number 10, staff reports. Chief, do you have anything to report?
Oh, just trying to get a cell phone back to somebody.
Thanks for the report. The next item, 11, City Council comments, and I guess I would like to lead off by saying that I had the privilege of attending gathering at MADA last night on the historical-cultural district proposal. Am I saying that correctly, guys? It was a tremendous turnout of the local community there. MADA was filled, lots of good discussion. I want to thank our staff members, Michelle Rainfield, Chase Ogwalt, and of course, William Reese, who did an excellent job of presenting. And I think it was unanimous that the community wanted to move forward with further consideration and refinement of the proposed project. So, I think all in all, it was very, very successful, and I thank you guys for an excellent presentation. And we did have a gentleman from history Colorado, Eric, Eric was there.
Eric Newcomb.
Yeah, thank you. And he was very, very helpful, too. So, it was all in all a very good meeting. And Councilman Yuliberry was also there.
I just wanted to mention that yesterday, our staff presented our plans for our Fourth of July party, and one of the things that is being big change is the traffic pattern for the parade. There is announcements out on social media and press, and there are press releases going because we are rerouting the parade route, and it's really important for our citizens to understand logistical and safety reasons for that. So, please look up what it is, where it's going, and why we did it.
I'd like to add that there aren't going to be a lot of activities for the Fourth of July. I would recommend that everybody take a look and spend some time in Montrose and join the festivities.
I'd just like to comment on what a fine job one of police department officers did in helping a fellow survive. I think that was excellent.
It was. Sergeant Jonathan Roberts did a great job.
It's always great to see some good positive information come in. Thank you.
And just so, because you're too far back, Sergeant Jonathan Roberts is the one who responded in such a positive way. We want to give a shout out and kudo to Sergeant Roberts.
No other council staff comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.